Good afternoon. We'll go ahead and get started. We'll have a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Henderson.
...to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to the Board of Education's July 28th work session, quarterly work session. Just a reminder, a few announcements. Our August work session will be held in this room next Wednesday, August 4th, with the regular session to follow on Wednesday, August 11th, also held in the main assembly room. Both meetings will begin at the regular start time of 5:00 p.m. The naming facilities committee will meet on Monday, August 23rd at 9:30 a.m. in the first floor boardroom of the Andrew Johnson Building. And also, the Joint Education Committee postponed their meeting previously scheduled for July 21st, and they've moved that meeting to Wednesday, August 25th, and the meeting will begin at 4:00 p.m., also held in the first floor boardroom of the Andrew Johnson Building. And those are the announcements that I have. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Hey, do we have a motion to approve? Thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Satterfield, a second by Ms. Bad. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and I would like to refer to Superintendent Thomas for his report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a few updates for you this evening. To begin, I hope that everyone is enjoying their break and has had a chance to rest and relax. Summer is an important time to recharge your batteries and spend time with loved ones, so I'm hopeful that our KCS employees have been taking advantage of this opportunity. At the same time, our fall semester is just around the corner, can you believe it? And I want students and families to know that KCS is working very hard to be ready, and we will be ready. With that in mind, I did want to highlight two events that took place recently. Earlier this month, our elementary and secondary principals gathered for our annual two-day training session called the Principals Institute. This event was at Bearden High School, and I was very pleased that our principals not only received important updates and training, but also were inspired by an outstanding guest speaker, Dr. Adolf Brown. Families will be receiving important back-to-school updates from their school principals soon, so please be on the lookout for that information. Also, please take a moment to thank our principals and assistant principals for their leadership. In addition, KCS this week is hosting our new Teachers Academy, an orientation event for teachers who are beginning their education career or are joining KCS from another district. Had the opportunity to attend the academy this morning with our elementary teachers, and tomorrow we'll attend with our secondary teachers, and I was very encouraged by the enthusiasm and energy of our new educators. As I said to them this morning, I think KCS is the very best school district they could have chosen, and hopefully they feel the same way. I'm certainly confident after meeting these teachers that they are extremely talented and will be tremendous assets to our students, families, and communities. I do want to remind families that our first half day of class is on Monday, August 9th, and we look forward to seeing all our students on the 9th. Madam Chair, members of the board, this concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Thomas. And if you want to go ahead and introduce our program, that would be great.
Yes, my pleasure. So, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'd like to take a moment to introduce our guests who will be presenting this evening, Jane Hyphel and Donna Gillick from Ford Next Generation of Learning. Ford is a nationally recognized organization that leverages the power of community partnerships to prepare students for post-secondary success in both college and careers. We've been working with them for over the last five months to get a better understanding of the strengths of our school district as well as areas where we can improve. Had the opportunity to meet with Jane and Donna this afternoon, in person finally. I'll have to say they're very personable and friendly on the screen, but even more so in person, so want to thank them for their time this afternoon. And we get to hear tonight a little bit more about the successful work that they've been a part of in more than 40 communities. I was also very proud to hear from them about how welcoming, engaged, and caring our students, family, staff, and community have been since our work began with Ford. It's always nice to hear from others, reaffirming what many of us already know. I'm grateful for Jane and Donna for being here tonight and sharing with you their report. I think you will find it interesting, and I hope that you will consider continuing this work, which has been graciously funded by the Knoxville Education Foundation. So I would be remiss if I did not thank Chris Lessow, President and Chief Executive Officer, for the Knoxville Education Foundation. So, Chris, thank you very much for all the work that you and your team have done to get us to this point. So, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent and Chief Academic Officer, Dr. John Risley.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Thomas. Guess it's on. Yeah, maybe. I'm just the wrong height for it. Maybe that's where it is. But thank you very much. So, we are excited tonight, and as Superintendent Thomas said, to have Donna and Jane here in person to be able to share this with you. I just want to kind of set a little context around what you're getting ready to hear before we start. So, you know, when I look in the crowd, I see Amy, there's Amy, see Amy Nolan here from the chamber, you know, Chris who's been here, Keith Wilson, who's been a big part of this work. And really, a couple years ago, we just began kind of trying to think through Danny Trent back there too, and his team on the secondary side. You know, how do we get the most out of our high schools? How do we have a system in place that every student's getting everything that they need? All the counseling they need for that, all the experiences they need for that, and just what does that look like? So, really kind of began looking at different schools and different folks that did things different ways. And one place we went was we were aware of Ford's work and went to Nashville and have sent different groups to go kind of see different sets of principals to go see that. I think maybe some of you on the board have been able to do that, some folks from the mayor's office and places, just to kind of see, you know, what that looks like. And really, wanted to say on the front side of this, this is not something the state's requiring us to do. You know, we've talked so much about requirements and all those kinds of things. This is really just us as a district looking at ourselves and saying, how can we be better? You know, how can we do better things for kids and for students to give them the opportunities? And really, it's more than just the school system. It really will be the entire community. We've had a few meetings today with both mayors and kind of having some conversations with them around what this work could look like, and it will definitely involve more than the school system as we kind of see what we want to build out for our folks. And so, again, conversations that started with the chamber years ago, it's kind of nice to see this to fruition with KEF support, being able to bring Ford in for this exploratory work to kind of get a feel for our schools and look at what we can do better, what we can do better at the high school level, and then that'll matriculate down to what we do better at middle schools and elementary schools so that we can make sure not just students who have resource or have connections, but that every student has a process that we can be intentional about as they graduate and then go beyond graduation. So, with that, we're excited for them to report out to you kind of the explore, what they've seen at the ground level, kind of our current status of where we are. So I'm going to turn it over to Donna and Jane at this point. So, thank you. It's a good question. So, on the slides for the presentation, not sure how this works. Can we pull it up and then, do we have a signal for advancement? Is it cough or just go to the next slide? What if they go to the next slide if that works? Okay, good deal. Thank you. Here's Donna.
Well, good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Thomas, and guests. First, I just want to thank you for having the opportunity for Jane and I to come and present our findings from our explorer visit, and we'll get to that, but to really just welcome all of us with open arms into your community. But before we introduce ourselves, I want to tell you what a pleasure it's been to get to know your community. That's your teachers, your principals, your school staff, your students, and your business and civic partners. They have just been an absolute thrill to get to know and to work with. And one thing is clear, Knox County truly cares about their students and setting them up for success, and that became very clear as we met with everyone, that you're truly invested. And, you know, we always want to focus on students in everything we do, and so I want to tell you a little story before we get started. I think it was our very first focus group, and I want to think it was Bearden, but we hadn't been off our focus groups since we had to do all this virtual, I bet it maybe an hour, when we got an email from a group of students. And they said they just wanted to thank us for listening to them. And I think that very email set the stage for this work, and we haven't been disappointed since, that we're in a community that truly cares about the students, the students really want to do well, and so we hope that that email sort of, I know it has propelled us into the work, and we hope tonight's presentation will just be the foundation of our future work together. But let's just start with introductions, and I'm going to ask Jane to come up and introduce herself first, and then I will.
Thanks, Donna. It's great to be in Knoxville. I will tell you, this is my first road trip in a year and a half. Ford grounded us for a year and a half from being able to travel to any communities. It's been a little nerve-wracking for me. I couldn't figure out what to put in my suitcase. I couldn't figure out what pair of pants to put on. It's just been a crazy kind of day, but just glad Knoxville's our first trip. So, again, my name is Jane Hyphel. I serve as a community coach with Ford Next Generation Learning. I've been with Ford about five years now as a community coach, but my background is in public education. I have been everything from a teacher through administrator in Pennsylvania. And I'm sure you can tell right now, I am not from Tennessee, as my colleague is from Tennessee. So I live in southwestern corner of Pennsylvania, just a little bit outside of Pittsburgh, about 45 minutes east. And yes, I am a Steeler fan. I know of a fellow Steeler fan sitting there, and hopefully we have a few more sitting in the room tonight. Outside my public education life, I've also worked with the Pittsburgh Technology Council, which is a large trade association, where I managed all their business education partnership programs. I also currently have my own company right now, do a lot of consulting work for the Pennsylvania Department of Education. I've worked with the mayor's office in Pittsburgh and multiple entities. Also had the privilege of teaching at the post-secondary level at Carnegie Mellon and Penn State, and preparing educational leaders for the future. But again, couldn't be more happy to be in Knoxville and really excited to present our findings. So, Donna?
Thank you, Jane. My name is Donna Gillick, and I've spent my entire educational career really helping building systems and structures for young people to achieve what's within them, to find that hope and dream and be successful. I taught in an academy classroom for the first 15 years of my career, and then I shifted to the district office where I have helped shape the academies of Nashville to be successful over the last 15 years and hopefully sustainable into the future. In addition to my career in the district, I have worked as a trainer and a coach for Ford NGL for several years, more of a trainer and a consultant, but then I just recently retired from full-time employment in Nashville and now get to serve as a coach. And I can't tell you how thrilled I am that Knoxville gets to be one of my first communities. So it is a thrill to be here with you this evening. And now we're going to jump in and talk a little bit about what Ford NGL is. One more slide up. There we go. And before we jump into the findings, I want to just talk a little bit about Ford NGL, the organization and the model. And I could tell you that it is truly, as the slide says, a community-connected learning model. Now, you might ask yourself what that means. Well, I first want to tell you what it's not. It doesn't mean that the community's going to come in and tell you how to run your house, and it also is not a program. It is truly a community-connected model where we help bring in all stakeholders in a community, parents, students, educators, business partners, foundation partners, civic partners, post-secondary partners, to come together and to envision what they want to see for their community, so that it becomes the community's students, not just the school districts. And they really envision that transformation. And you may ask, well, what would that look like? What would external partners do? And sometimes we refer to that to the three A's. Number one, these partners are going to advocate for you. They're going to be your advocate. They're also going to assist you. They're going to assist in that work, but they're also going to advise. And so those three A's, that's what these partners will do, advocate, advise, and roll up their sleeves and assist. So it truly is a community-connected approach where all stakeholders come together to have shared ownership and responsibility. And each organization will have its own set of roles and responsibilities, so that this work is very strategic, it's intentional, and it's planned. Next slide, please. And so on this slide, I wanted to first say that one of the first things we do when we go into a community is we look you in the eye and say, why do you want to change? Well, on this slide is really the why that we do this work, because we want to lead all communities to the things that you see up here on this screen. Now, I think you probably have a packet, or if not, the chair's going to get you one, but you're going to see that you are now going to be part of 43 communities from across the United States and the United Kingdom that are all working on similar transformational goals. And on the graph on the slide, you're going to see some of the outcomes that we have consistently seen across all of those 43 communities, that we want to ensure that young people are prepared for college, career, and life, to see shared prosperity, community prosperity, so that the, all of the community, not parts, but all of the community have prosperity, to assist in strengthening that talent pipeline, to ensure that our businesses have the talent from our schools to be the future employees. One of the most important things we stress is to make sure that equity and student voice is at the center of all of our work. And then finally, to work with a community to build capacity to continue this work and go further. So these are some of the outcomes that we have seen consistently across the 43 communities in which we've worked. Next slide, please. And so, as you all know, and Superintendent Thomas mentioned, we spent the last five or six months in Knoxville doing what we call the explorer visit. And really, that was a time for us to get to know you as a community, but also for you to get to know us, to see what Ford NGL is all about, to decide if we wanted to take this work further. We've been able, and Jane's going to talk you through the report in just a few moments, but we've been able to host over 50 work sessions, focus groups, where we've talked to teachers, parents, students, business partners, community partners, post-secondary partners. And so in just a few moments, Jane will share that report with you. But before that happens, if you'll look at the next slide, these were the four things that we were really looking for in each one of those conversations. We were looking for commitment, for capacity, the current status of what's going on in your schools, and most importantly, readiness. And what I can tell you is Knox County met and exceeded all four of those goals. On the next slide, I'm going to show you just a very quick look at the timeline. So, again, we've been in the community since February. You can see on the screen here some of the timeframes that we've worked with your community and school teams. And now, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Jane, and she's going to walk you through the process that we took and some of the findings. Jane?
Thanks, Donna. Next slide, please. So, as Donna said, I'm going to walk you through our actual explorer visit to Knox. Again, over the past about five months we've been here. And what Donna didn't tell you is we call this our dating phase. We kind of get to know each other and figure out whether we're going to get to move on to the next step. And we actually had a very successful dating phase, I will tell you that. But what did we do during these months? Well, we used a variety of methods to look at all types of data and information from Knox County. We looked at a variety of reports, workforce trends, industry trends, student achievements, surveys, CTE programs. But the most important information that we gathered were from the 50-plus focus groups that we met with. We conducted focus groups at all of your high schools. We met with students, teachers, parents. We met with the KCS district leaders. We met with school board members, high school leadership. And we also met with business and community leaders, post-secondary institution representatives, and the Knox Ed Foundation members. I'm just curious, how many of you participated in one of our focus groups? I recognize faces, great, perfect. So you understand what we were doing at the focus groups, which was very, very powerful. And our job was to listen, listen, and listen, again, to learn everything we could through those focus groups. So what were some of those questions we asked? First of all, what do you like and dislike about the schools? That was a key question. And I'll tell you, the kids were amazingly honest with us, very transparent. And I'll tell you, the kids were amazingly honest with us, very transparent. They really, really loved their schools, but I could tell you that they have concerns. They'd like to see some changes and they told us about that. And I'll talk a little bit about that as I go through the report. But we loved meeting with the kids. But their biggest message to us is they're worried about some of the other kids and what they need. We asked students, teachers, and parents about career advising and career development, how that was happening in the classroom, how students were acquiring career information. And then I always play a game, especially with the kids, and I wave my magic wand and I say, going to make you the, you have all the power that you need right now to make a change at the school. What would that be? And we get great information that way because they really take that very thoughtfully and seriously, parents, students, teachers, everybody, whenever they have that power to make that change. So that's something we do. But I don't take it away, I just want you to know that. They still don't have that power. So that power's been taken back. And then we asked the business community about their current levels of engagement. How do they engage and how are they interested in engaging with the school district? So next slide. So our findings goes through strengths, challenges, and recommendations. And by the way, Knox County and Knox County schools are doing amazingly great things and we were super impressed. As you can see by this slide, your leadership is outstanding. We're fortunate enough that weekly, we meet with the key leadership team. We meet with John, Keith, Saleed, Tommy, Danny, Carly, Chris. They're all part of that team right now and they are just so committed and passionate to all of this work that we're about to undertake. Great school culture. First thing that everybody told us, our schools are great. We have great culture. We have a welcoming environment. Teachers love us. That's what the kids told us. The teachers love teaching here. Teachers understand the need to change. They see the world changing and they feel that they need to change too. So they really have the ability to think about change and transformation. You already have high levels of academic achievement. And then last, you have a very committed group of business, community, and civic leaders, and especially the leadership at the Ed Knox Foundation. Now, we walk into a lot of our communities and there is no one organization that's emerging as a leader to be what we call a convening org. But I'll tell you, this Knox Educate Foundation, under the guidance of Chris, is a fantastic group. They are so committed to providing the resources, not only the monetary resources to commit transformation, but the people that it takes for the transformation. And they're also very willing to engage that broader business community that's needed to have community-connected learning. Next slide. And as with every district, with every business, with everything we do, there's some challenges. And I just want to tell you how much we admire you for taking this bold step forward to allow us to come in and look at your district through our lens. It's hard because you've opened yourself up to us. You've made yourselves transparent to us. But again, we admire you for taking that bold step and thinking that, yeah, we're good, but we can get better. And that's what this is all about, is getting better. So what are some of those things that we found? So understanding your challenges. First of all, this is going to set you apart from other districts because you're going to know what's happening and what your challenges are. So equitable experiences. We found out that not all students have access to the same experiences and opportunities. It varied by high school, it varied by grade, it varied by class. We also found out that not all children have access to the supports and the resources that they need. The other thing about career advising, we found out again, that there was not evidence that you have a cohesive career advising plan for the district. There were great pockets that we could point to as best practices, but in other areas, we didn't have that career advising going on for students. And many times, it was really dependent on the student being able to seek out their own information or stepping into the guidance counselor's office. The post-secondary preparation, it was very, it was expressed that there is a push for all students to go to college and pursue post-secondary education. And while in itself, this is not a negative goal, there's really not a plan for all students to be exposed to the type of experiences they need to make educated and informed decisions about post-secondary education. And also, there wasn't evidence that students were really advised on other viable options for post-secondary plans, you know, going directly to work, two-year certificate programs, apprenticeships, other types of very viable career options available to them. As far as the course and career pathway advisement, again, there was some limited amount of information that students received regarding that career. And those career pathways are a really important component of KCS, but again, that limited information. So it's, from a student's perspective, if I do this, then what do I do? So we couldn't find evidence of that. So next slide. And several other challenges, career and tech ed programs. You have great career and tech ed programs here, by the way. And it's really a, what's really interesting is your student demand is outpacing the supply, which means that students want CTE programs. But we also couldn't find evidence that students were really completing that two-year sequence of CTE courses that leads to being a completer. And that kind of ties back into that career advising and the career pathway piece. And the last one is the business and civic engagement. It's very limited in most high schools and there really isn't a district-wide plan to assure an equitable approach to providing students with work-based learning opportunities. We couldn't really define who was responsible for these work-based learning opportunities and some of those are actually secured independently by students without guidance from the district. And again, that was very inconsistent across the high schools. So next slide. So let's go to our recommendations. So let's first of all, talk about equitable experiences. One of the biggest things about systems and structures that need to be in place to allow all students opportunities for success, both while they're in school and after graduation. Retaining teachers and ability to hire teachers. Teachers need to feel supported at all their schools. And when moving to a career academy model, that's one of the key pillars within a career academy model, is that they're part of a family within their school and they feel very supported with the resources that they need. Second is the integrated career advising and it's developing a system whereby all students have a plan that leads to achieving their individual goals and aspirations. One thing we recommended was a freshman seminar course or freshman academy. And that freshman seminar course is really about connecting academic learning to the real world, but at the same time, being supported by career development and career advising. Okay? So they really start to understand the why. Why do they need to learn math? Why do they need to learn English, science, et cetera? So those core courses, they're able to connect it to their why based on a career plan. And again, we know that freshman year is a tough year for kids, right? It's a big transition year. So having that freshman seminar engages kids in school. And you also want to put your best teachers there too, teaching those kids so that they want to continue on to the 10th, 11th, 12th grade year. The post-secondary advising, the question we always ask is, while students may go to college, do they actually finish? Or do they change options along the way? But they may be finished in five or six years. So creating systems and structures that are important so all students have that individualized plan to allow that seamless transition to post-high school opportunities, not just college opportunities, but all post-high school opportunities. Next slide. The career pathways, it's really about building out intentional and strategic pathways that are consistent, that show those post-high school options. So again, if I do this, then this is what I can do. So students may choose to leave Knox County schools and go directly into the workforce, but they want to come back into some type of a two-year program. So creating those viable on-off ramps for students is important. In addition, using that ninth grade year as an exploratory year will really enhance their students' ability to gain strong career advising and realize possibilities that exist for them in the 10th, 11th, and 12th grade year. Also, creating a more robust middle school communication plan so that students are stepping into ninth grade, having a better understanding of pathways and what's available to them in the high school year. When we look at the career and technical education programs, again, you currently have great CTE programs under the direction of Keith. But we want to look future, you know? What are those future opportunities in CTE? Also reviewing staffing patterns. That has the potential to serve additional students, to meet your current levels of demand by the students, and then also making sure that the resources align to the student demand. And the last one is business and community engagement. As noted in the challenge, there's no district-wide plan to engage businesses equitably across all the schools. So really, a review of the current partners you have, their level of engagement is a first step of developing a plan and a district-wide plan to engage that business community across all the high schools. Okay? Next slide. So one thing we're always asked, does it work? Does the Ford NGL process work? So I wanted to give you some of the indicators that we have from some of our current communities. This one is from Hampton, Virginia, and Hampton has chosen to go to a wall-to-wall academy system in their high schools. This is when Hampton originally started, they decided to use pocket academies, which were just small learning communities within larger high schools. But they quickly looked at the data and realized, well, if this is being successful with those students in pocket academies, why wouldn't we want all students to have that success? So you could see what happened, the suspension rate, the attendance rate, the GPAs. But you know, one of the really important ones here is attendance because if you can't get kids to school, they can't learn. So you got to get kids engaged in order for them to be in school and learning. So that was a big one for Hampton when they looked at pocket academies versus career academies in more of a wall-to-wall fashion in all the high schools. And that was their decision. So next slide. And one thing we always look at is Algebra I proficiency in pass because that's a really core course, right? Algebra I. And this was the data that Hampton, Virginia saw whenever they went to a career academy model. And I won't spend a lot of time with this, but I think all we need to look at is that upward trend. They continued to see higher proficiency in pass percentages in students who were taking Algebra I once they moved to an academy. What they attributed to is students were making the connection to why do I need to learn algebra? They had a reason to do it because they were connecting it to real-world experiences. So again, this was just a positive trend that showed higher Algebra I with a career academy. So next slide, I'd like to show you Lexington because this is really focused on the freshman year. We talked about freshman seminar or freshman academy as they had, which meant all students were in an academy. They had a freshman seminar course, but they were structured around academy. And you can quickly see that higher levels of, there were lower levels of tardies, absences in both of these schools. This was Bryan Station and Tates Creek High Schools in Lexington, Kentucky. And it's all about students being in school to learn. So that's why they were starting to see their proficiency rates raised, or you see at Hampton, Lexington, the same way. They saw proficiency rates being raised because kids were in school. So they made some tremendous strides and differences in those indicators of success. And then the next slide is also from Lexington, which shows in-school suspensions, out-of-school from both those high schools. And you can see a significant decrease in all of those markers. So next slide. So Donna originally talked to you about what we were looking for when we came here, that commitment, capacity, current status, and readiness. And as you can see, we checked the boxes. Commitment was very high here, the capacity, tremendous capacity. So this really gives you the green light to move forward. So what does it look like if we move forward? So next slide. So you can see our roadmap and you have that also in your packet in a bigger slide. And again, I just want to emphasize, Ford is not a program, it's a process. And if I had the technological capabilities, which I don't, to put Knox County on that dotted line, it would be there. This is your journey. This is your roadmap. All of our communities go through this process, but everyone looks different because it's all about your goals and your outcomes. So we just finished this Phase 1 and we want to work strategically and intentionally to move to these next levels so that all students can achieve their goals and outcomes. And I'll talk to you a little bit about this Phase 2, what it's going to look like. But again, this is probably a, realistically, till you get to full Phase 5, we're looking at a three- to five-year process. Just depends how fast and quickly Knox moves. But we have a saying, slow is smooth and smooth is fast. So we like to do this intentionally with fidelity along the way. So that's an important part of this. So next slide. So if we move to Phase 2, what's it going to look like? And I could tell you, this is where the hard work starts, or we like to say, the courageous work, because it's going to take courage to change. Anytime we change, you're going to have to make some tough decisions. Some people may not like it, but you always have to come back to the why. Why are we doing this? So in Phase 2, we do several things. First of all, we will be here, if we move to the next couple of phases, which we will be doing, is we will be here for a full day with multiple stakeholders at the table. And we will be establishing a collective why. When I talk all those stakeholders, I'm talking school, community, post-secondary, students, teachers. Why? Why do we want to transform the high school experience for students? And we also create what we call a profile of a graduate. And this is the fun part, we love this part, creating a profile of a graduate, because what do all the stakeholders want? All the Knox County graduates to know? How do they want them to learn? How do they want them to think? What types of experiences do you want them to have? And that really becomes your guiding north star for everything going forward. So you want to say that every student that walks across that stage has these attributes that the community and the school district collectively together have defined. It's also about shared accountability then, because everybody has a responsibility to that profile of a graduate. Doesn't matter what role or responsibility you assume in the community. That's what you want. That's what you're helping to have the students be, is that profile of a graduate. This also helps define a community-wide definition of equity, because we all work off a different definition of equity. But developing what does that mean for the community is going to be very important. At this juncture, we also establish what's called a steering committee, which kind of oversees the transformation work. And this is a group of school members, the school community and external community of really your advocates, people in high-level positions that will serve on this steering committee. So as an example, we've already told Mr. Thomas that Superintendent Thomas would have a seat on that steering committee. We would have a board member to have seats on that steering committee. Some of your CEOs from your major corporations would have a seat on that steering committee. Somebody at a high level in your post-secondary institutions would have a seat on that steering committee. So they're really monitoring this transformation and what happens and looking at different data points and assisting, advising, and advocating. They're your biggest advocates out there in the community. So once we get through Phase 2, then we move into Phase 3, which is that developing of the master plan. And this is really your action plan. This is how you're going to get there, how you're going to achieve your goals and your outcomes. So it's a living document, it's a working document with everybody's input that really establishes, again, those roles and responsibilities for everyone to achieve the goals that you've defined. And there's measurable outcomes in there. So it holds all stakeholders accountable, not just the school district, not just the business community, but everyone is held accountable to that. So next slide. So what's our timeline for this? Well, we're quickly, as Superintendent Thomas said, moving into the August timeframe and the startup of school. So we'll start those initial planning meetings with our implementation team to really lay out those visioning and master planning sessions. Our hope is that during the September, October, we'll have a visioning session, having that one-day session, and then jumping into our master planning with the intent of having that completed after the first of the year, having that master plan. The reason it's important to have that master plan completed by that timeframe is to allow the opportunity for those first-year implementation strategies to be put into place for the fall of '22, '23, because this will be scaffolded. The master plan will be scaffolded year 1, 2, 3, but we want to start to work on that implementation, as we call it, the heavy lifting going into the fall of the 2022 school year. So that allows that time for that to happen. Also, I wanted to tell you, I forgot, the fun part of this too, is that we'll have a designation ceremony. After you complete your master plan, we're going to celebrate your achievement. And at that time, you are officially designated as a Ford Next Generation Learning community and you will join those 43-plus communities as one of those that have chosen to take a bold step forward to be creative and innovative for all of your students. So Keith?
If you'll put the next slide up. So I have a very small role to play in this one and that is in relation to this slide because Donna and Jane actually because Donna and Jane actually chose to include this. This was a slide that we created for our very first meeting with principals prior to our focus groups. Sorry, get close to the mic. Prior to setting off the work with the focus groups, this was a slide that we shared with them. And as she mentioned, you know, part of that next phase of the work is really to develop a community-wide sense for why the need for transformation and why the need to make some changes. And that really is, it is a process that you go through to really define that. But we started our principles with this idea of, well, why do we need to engage with Ford? Why do we want to be using them to start these conversations and to do this work? And I'm encouraged, I think, as you look at the report, and I'll kind of briefly go through these, I think that we've got some direction and some answers and some confirmation that this was the kind of thing that we needed to be seeking assistance on. And so the points we really talked to our principals about is this idea that, you know, access to post-secondary is not enough for our students, that we really have to be thinking about, not only are they getting in, but why are they going there? What's their purpose? How have they prepared themselves for arriving at the community college level or the university level? Like, what have they done during their high school experience that's refined their reason for being there? And then also, this idea that there's a difference between being prepared to graduate, to walk across that stage with the right number of credits and all of those things, and being prepared to be successful, so that when, once I arrive at that post-secondary level for continued education, for training, or maybe straight to the workplace, what have those experiences that I've had while I've been in high school done for me that ensure that I'm going to be as successful as possible with whatever my next step is? The third one, and very relevant in terms of CTE, because we hear that, I know you guys in your, from your seats, hear that a lot too, from business partners and folks. You know, there's a large degree of interest and good intention about working with our students and engaging with our students, and really the need to build the talent pipeline for the business community here in the Knoxville area. And we know that the high schools play an integral role in that. But again, with 16 high schools and a variety of programs and teachers and just ways of businesses engaging with us, we've got to have a better framework and structure for how we do that if we're going to be contributing to that talent pipeline. So that's, you know, that's everything from those partnerships to what types of experiences and credentials and early post-secondary opportunities students are engaged with while they're in high school and thinking very intentionally about that. And then last, and I think this is the one that sort of rings true when you think about the, some of the challenges we have, is that it's not enough to have some of our students succeed. And we think about those first-generation collegegoers, we think about, you know, I think of my own children who benefit from the fact that I've been in school and college, and I've navigated that, and I can help them do that. And so they get a lot of that assistance from me. And we have students that get that at school, we have students that get that from their parents, and then we have some that maybe don't. And so this idea of, and what you hear from Jane and Donna talk a lot about systematic approaches and increasing our consistency, increasing our intentionality. That's the idea and the spirit there, is we can't have kids that fall through the cracks and don't get those experiences that we know are going to be crucial to their next steps. And we can't rely on it just being the role of the family or the student to self-advocate to do that. We have to be intentional about what that looks like. And so that was sort of, again, the spirit of how we started this conversation with our school principals in leading into the focus group. And I hope that you can see the beginnings of this work from the feedback that we're seeing from this report. And so I think I'm turning it back to Jane and Donna for questions at this time. I think that's the end of the report.
Thanks, Keith. Yeah, we're willing to take any questions that you might have for us.
Right, thank you very much, Ms. Bab.
I'll start. First off, I, and I think a lot of people know, but I got to go to Nashville, and it almost, I had forgotten about it, because it was the week before kind of the world died with COVID. But it was a great experience, and I got to go with Keith Wilson and Amy Nolan from The Chamber and some other people with CTE. And I'll just say, the thing that really struck me that I know we are not doing in our schools is we do not have the partnerships with industry. And when I went to those schools, and they had a day and program set up, but I mean, these were some top employers, like their CEOs and stuff like that were engaged in the schools in Nashville, not like at the, you know, the central office level, but like they had a relationship with Powell or Halls or wherever. And they were meeting with teachers, they were meeting with programming to make sure that we really are developing our students and offering things like internships and things like that. And, you know, I think that we all want to do that and want more of that, but I think what I like about what Ford Next Generation is offering is it does give us a framework for doing that, because I think we have, I think our schools too much are going off in two different, many different directions, and some of them are doing some good things, but we definitely are not doing it consistently off the district and across the district. And that's one thing I really am hoping to see, is it really, like Keith talked about and y'all talked about, is really being able to provide this with, to all of our children and giving them good pathways to be successful after school. So I do have one question for y'all, is we're talking about kind of trying to get this sort of implementation started in fall '22, '23. The way y'all do it, would we start with all of our high schools, or do you start piecemeal? Kind of what, how does that work?
That's really different, that varies by district. So that's going to be a decision that you're going to have to make moving forward. Is it going to be an original cohort of schools and which schools that will be? So again, that's something that will be a decision that will be coming forth, I would say, probably in the next few months, John, would you say?
Yes.
Yeah. And we'll help you walk through that process of making, you know, how are you going to make? We call them implementation decisions, and that's one of them, so.
I appreciate the work y'all are doing, I mean, I think it's very, I think it's exciting to hear what's going on.
Okay, good, great, thank you.
Sorry, can I add one thing to that? Sorry, I'm probably out of order.
No, go ahead, Dr. Eisen.
Since we're answering questions. So I will say this, though, that we have at least, I'm looking at Danny and Keith, at least four to five schools, five, okay, thank you, Danny, that have been involved either going to the trips and/or in like some small groups working through that, and I won't name those schools right now. So it's like, this, there are some principals that haven't been any more involved than hearing the presentation and hearing their colleagues talk about it, but there are five that have been pretty engaged in the work to this point. So we feel like, you know, if we do go cohort, a cohort model, that we will have some, you know, early pioneers who will want to start that work.
And, I mean, has this, kind of what we've learned today, has that been presented to all of our high school principals at this point?
I don't think we've done the full presentation, no. We haven't, we haven't talked through each of the, but again, they got feedback on their focus groups, you know, they helped actually set those up for their parents and their teachers. So again, it's not foreign to them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And, you know, I'll just say thank you to Knox Education Foundation for really being such a partner in starting this, in helping Dr. Reiswick and his team in this conversation and really helping get it off the ground. So thank you for that commitment. And Dr. Reiswick, would you like to talk about just the vision for, for the next steps for Phase 2, 3, 4, 5? What you're, as far as, just add any timetable or whatever you'd want to add to that.
Thank you, Ms. Horn. I think, again, I think there's sometimes you realize you have an expertise in an area, and there's sometimes you realize you need to go partner with experts who understand all of those. And I think, again, like seeing Amy in the crowd and Keith and Danny, I mean, these are conversations we were having three years ago about how do we do this wisely? You know, how do we not just charge into something and, you know, pull something off a website and do it? So through lots of conversations, and I'll say lots of frustrations, because lots of times when we've tried to get off the ground, and we had a conversation with the mayor today, there's times we stepped on his toes and he stepped on ours trying to figure some of this stuff out, and we know that. So I think, you know, we realize this is something we could do on our own, and I think spending that time to get there. So I say all that to say, I know there will be pieces they'll challenge us in, and there will be tough questions and courageous decisions we'll have to make, as Jane said earlier. But I think it does, you know, these, making this master plan, defining what we as a community want, expect in our profile of a graduate. What is a graduate, no matter if you go to school at Carter or Farragut? What do we expect all kids to have exposure to, not just their senior year, but you know, back in the sixth grade that builds to that level? Again, this has been in our heads for a long time. We visited Catholic, we visited Webb, we saw what they do for their freshmen, sophomores, juniors. And, you know, we don't have that kind of uniform system in place, and we're a larger system. That's hard to get that kind of cohesion around that. So I think all of those kinds of things, we'll start seeing small steps working that way. But again, as Donna and Jane have said, everyone has to understand the why first that we're going there. It's not a compliance thing, it's not the state's making us do it, like none of those. It's, it's understanding what we want to do to drive forward for kids. And once we have that common definition, backward planning, what that looks like and what structures and systems need to change, because there will be decisions. And again, it's not a, you know, we're going to gut a school and change all its programming out, but I mean, we, they need to have a plan toward intentionality around programs they offer. And, you know, maybe when someone retires, that's the time to think about what do we do with the program and those kinds of things. So I think there will be good decisions made around that. And again, we're confident with the success they've had in other communities that they'll help us. And we'll learn from the other communities too, and we're excited to do that.
Okay, great, thank you. Other questions? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Susan. So I'm thrilled with the process and really appreciate the intentionality around engaging the community, the level of work that went on there, that this isn't a top-down approach, but it's really hearing from the community system-wide. And I think one of the critical things moving forward will be defining that community-wide definition of equity. Like you said, that's, people tend to define that very differently. And I think that will be a challenge, but a good one, to take the community through that process and doing that. I have just a couple of questions about this. One is, I know you started talking about freshmen, the freshman academy and getting that started and the impact on high schools. What potential direct or indirect impacts have you seen in other communities for your middle school students and grades even below that, right? I mean, I know this is directed toward high school and what we're doing there, but what are the potential impacts that you're seeing in that strategy and systems even before the high school years?
You know, that's a great question. Interesting enough, right now, we are working with Akron School District, which is one of our communities, that is taking this model now and putting it down into the middle and doing a strategic plan for their elementary. So that there are profiles of an eighth grader and, you know, profiles, so each one kind of locks together. The other thing that's really important, though, is middle school strategies for career development and career advising that really needs to go down into the elementary level too. So the students are coming through all the grades, understanding that career development, career advising, and where that can lead them to. So by the time they get to that ninth-grade level, they have a lot of information. Right now, like, you just kind of get dropped off into that ninth-grade year, right?
Right.
And it's like, oh, I've got to make all these decisions. So it really is important, and some communities have even written into their master plan a middle school strategy, so that they make sure that that is happening for all the middle school students.
So are those the types of questions that are standard within this core Next Generation process, where you're asking districts to also consider that pipeline and how that system is developed even in advance of the high schools? I mean, I know you're saying some communities have done that work, but is those, are those the types of questions that all communities are asking? Now, the results may be different.
We're getting a lot more questions about that middle school piece right now, because they're seeing the value at the high school, but then they start thinking, well, we need to start preparing our kids earlier. So it is, we're seeing more of our work coming down into the middle and the elementary levels, definitely, yes.
So as the work moves into the next phase, how can the board be most supportive?
I think just, I was going to add on the middle school portion. I have also seen communities with sort of a STEAM focus in the middle schools, because if you look at science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics, that's going to feed into almost any career pathway. So really having those STEAM conversations in the middle school. But I do think the more our communities are seeing the engagement at the high school level, as Jane said, they're pushing down. And so those conversations come up during that master planning. Because during master plan, there are tactical plans that the community will complete. And one will be about a continuum. If that's work-based learning, do you want to start earlier? But then I think you had a question about, what was your last question, sir?
Well, my last question was how can the board be most supportive as we move into this next phase of the process?
You know, I think just being a part of our conversations, having a seat at the table and being able to know and just be supportive, to understand that this is for all. And when we say, oh, it is truly capital A, capital L, capital L, it's all students. And creating system structures and processes for all students. And so I think being at those visioning sessions, helping us envision what does that mean for you, because you represent all of the families in each of your districts, and then continuing to ask questions to push us and to push the steering committee and group as we move forward.
So it's great having an organization like yours at the table that's helped guiding the process and has all the experience with, you know, 43 other partners across the country. In, with those 43 other sites, where have you seen districts get it wrong? In terms of veering off course, getting distracted? I mean, what are the things we need to be looking out for to make sure we're not going down some of those paths?
For me, I think number one was doing it with fidelity, just like anything else. Is, is once we create system structures and processes, really doing it with fidelity. And you'll hear us talk a lot about slow is smooth and smooth is fast. Sometimes we get really excited and we're like, oh, yes, I want the kids this year to be able to be exposed to this. But it really takes that time to build those structures, processes, and systems and change the mindset around how to implement and how to use those system structures and processes. So really, for me, it would be fidelity and making sure you get the foundation right before you move forward.
And really, the reason for writing the master plan is the adherence to the master plan. I mean, that's going to be your guide to get to your goals and outcomes. So monitoring that master plan, you know, assuring that what you put in there happens. So the accountability to that master plan. And it's not just a district accountability, it's shared accountability across the community, sharing that master plan. I will say, that's a living document too. And there may be times when you start to review that and you say, oh, we didn't get that done, let's move it to the next year. Some things shift or change, but that master plan is so critically important to keep you on track. Because there's always distractions, right?
Sure.
The next shiny penny is going to come along.
Right.
But you have to be committed to the process. And we always say, trust the process, and be committed to that process to get you to your goals. Because it's going to get a little sluggish, it's going to get a little slow. As Donna said, all of a sudden, the business partners are going to want to come, yeah, 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 I want to do this, I want to do that. We've got to, you have to scaffold it, slow it down, so that you're taking each step, getting it right, and then going to the next step. Get it right and move on.
And I would also like to add, when you develop these, if you call these the academies of Knox County or the academies of Knox County, I doubt seriously you're going to name them the academies of Knox County schools. They are going to be the academies of Knox County, meaning that this is a complete ownership and accountability across the community. And I think that is so important. If you can keep that, making sure that it's not just a school district thing, it's not just a community thing, this is our thing.
Right, thank you.
Can I ask a question? Okay, so I know part of the, part of the process will be identifying which, what the academies ought to be, what the focus, what is the need in the community, what those academies should be. So right now, for instance, we have schools that, some schools, you know, there may be a welding program. Some schools, there's more of a health career focus. So would, if a school currently has, if they're heavy into two different or three different veins of CTE offerings, would they have, would they, for instance, have two academies that would be, for instance, a health academy and a welding academy? Does my question make sense? And would those be specific to schools so that if a student is interested in one of those, they may have to transfer to a school for that programming? Is that, is that the idea? I'm just trying to kind of see how vast the changes will, would be.
And that's a really common question that we get from our communities. It's really not up to Donna and I. This will be up to you and the community to determine, looking at workforce data, looking at existing programs. And the last thing you want to do is take a really, really good program and not have it anymore. So this isn't about doing away, as John said, with what's happening. It's about taking the really good things that are happening and put it together. I always kind of look at making a quilt.
Okay.
You know, putting all the, maybe I'm telling my age whenever I talk about quilting. My grandmother used to quilt, and I used to love her, and I wanted her quilts. But, you know, putting all those pieces together to make that beautiful quilt. So right now, you have pieces, right? So let's bring them together.
Gotcha.
And what does that look like? But that's going to be a community, that's going to be your decision. And that's why we're not a program, we're a process.
And I would like to add, just to help you, I like numbers and being able to see something visually. An academy is usually made up of anywhere between 350 and 450 students. So probably if you went into a school, let's say a school of 1,500, probably your freshman group is probably, I don't know, probably maybe 500, just for simplicity sake, we'll say that. And then if you had 1,000 students, grade 10 through 12, if you decide that you'll keep freshman academy as a standalone academy, but again, that will be the community's decision. And then if so, then decision. And then if so, then 10 through 12, you had 1,000 students, I'd probably recommend that be three academies.
Okay.
So that becomes families.
Gotcha. That, that explains, that is exactly what I was wondering. I think that, that answers my question.
Good. Great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other, other questions?
Dr. Ryswick, did you want to add something?
If you, thank you, Miss Horn. I was just going to say, you know, I've, I've heard Keith say this before and I think it's, I think it's right too. So we, and we talked about this some today in some of our meetings. So there, there will be multiple exits for students. There'll be some students who will exit as they graduate and go straight to workforce. And, and we're good with that. There'll be some who will get PhDs and then go to workforce or whatever. So I think what, and Keith's always great to remind us of this, we don't, we're not saying that every kid's going to be locked into their profession when they graduate high school. So for some kids, yes, and they'll be able to utilize that to a certain. So as some kid may want to do a programmatic transfer, and we offer that now in Knox County. But, but most kids, it's, it's really the value of what we can do through, you know, CTE is a very experiential type of learning. It's very different than, you know, reading a novel or doing something like that. So we think there's value even in having exposure to that kind of learning within your high school experience. And then the other thing we've realized too, is sometimes kids realize that's not what they want to do. And that's just as valuable before you leave high school than, than to know what you do want to do. So I don't know that we're going to see like a mass exit of, exit of transfers and people not want to play for their football team and then their band and those kinds of things. But we have that currently in place where some could, could change for a program. But I don't, I mean, so again, it'll, it'll play out as it does, but I don't, I don't see that happen in our community.
Okay, that makes sense. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. John may have partially answered part of my question. I was, it was along the lines of things you were talking about. As Mr. Watson was talking over there about the definition of, of equity, it'll be interesting to, to find out what, how that checks out. But in reference to what you were talking about, John, are, in the process, do you all encourage the kids to, as many of them to go to college as, as can? Is that part of the, of the, the process and the goal? Or is it more that they seek the level that they, you know, where, where they want to be? I think John said something that is probably more important than, than a lot of us have ever thought about or realized. But you, you may not know exactly what you want to do when you graduate from high school. Most of us didn't. I think for sure we had some idea. But if you can find out something that, that you definitely don't want to do, that, that helps you tremendously. Or, or I would think it.
Yeah. And, and remember, if students can discover these things in high school, just think what it saves in the long run. You know, they're, they're basically learning what they want or maybe what they don't want in a public school setting, right? So when they do make those decisions, then, you know, I had a professor tell me one time that kids graduate from college, it's like having a mortgage without a house. Because they've gone through college, but they still don't know what they do, want to do. So having those experiences, and if, when you have that profile to graduate too, remember, an academy may not be specific, you know, to a student's, but they're still going to have all those skills, experiences that all students will have. So there's great value in any type of learning in an academy that students achieve through. Just because they get those 21st century learning skills and communications and problem solving and teamwork and everything that's essential for moving on.
The quicker that they can, in, in my opinion, the quicker they can establish what they don't want to do.
Yes.
And, and what they want to do and pursue that to whatever level they're comfortable with, that, the quicker they can get into that career, the more earning power that they will have, more years of earning power.
Absolutely. Just quickly, I'll tell you why I'm so passionate about this work. High school, I was told I had to go to college. I went to college, but I had no idea why I was there. I quit after three years. Spent three years with no idea. I went to work for 10 years in a warehouse. I packed orders and, you know, unloaded trucks. And after 10 years, somebody said to me, do you really want to do this the rest of your life? Well, I said no. So I went back to college after 10 years. And it was hard then. Had, you know, was married, had responsibilities. So I went back, completed my undergraduate degree and eventually went on for my graduate degree. But I think what if I would have had this? And I think how many kids are me? And I don't want kids to be me. Because it was hard. So what you're saying is absolutely right. Totally concur with you on that situation. If the sooner kids can think about what they don't, but they're also learning those thinking skills that are going to help them no matter where they go or what they do. They're prepared. We say college, career and life. And that life to me is probably, should be life on the front end, you know, versus the college and career. So, yeah. So other questions?
I wanted to just address the career, but you asked, would we encourage two-year trade school? What we really encourage is post-secondary training. And many communities are taking the word college and trying to help students understand that that could mean university, but it could mean community college, it might mean trade school, it could be an apprenticeship. But that every pathway has multiple exit points. Because some students may want to go directly to UT Knox School, right out of high school. But some students may need to get an industry certification and work their way through the Pelosi to get to that same point. And so I think it's really making sure that we build the pipelines, the infrastructure for students and families to see multiple exit points and that they're all successful, that we're not just saying only a four-year degree equals success.
Other questions? John said we had 30 minutes, John. We've gone well beyond our, our 30 minute. But other questions? We're, we're willing to, to stay and entertain questions and?
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One quick question. John, you were referencing a little bit about transfers. And we have a transfer process now in Knox County schools. I wouldn't say it's incredibly open. So as, as you've seen communities adopt more of this academy structure and as communities have worked toward equity, have you seen communities also start to rethink the way they look at choice within their system and the ability for students to move outside or to go to schools outside of their zones and rethinking those processes?
We have certainly seen, and I can only speak for Nashville, and we, we do not offer the same academies at each school. So we have specialties. I will say that of our 12 academy schools, health science, for example, is the highest need and the highest interest and aptitude. And so we use the U-Scienc. And the great thing is, I said, many of your schools use that to help indicate where their talents and skills are. And so that will play a part too. But we, we've seen some transfer, but it really depends on a student's ability to get one from one school to the other, if, if they drive or what have you. We have not personally seen a lot of, I mean, you would, you would think that all the students would flock to one school that has the, you know, the powerhouse football program or something. But the truth is, we really haven't seen a whole lot of that.
Yeah. In our communities, most students seem to stay within their zone school because that's their, you know, that's their community. So.
Thank you. All right. Great discussion. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, I'd just like to say, Madam Chair, board members, I'm very excited about this. You know, this, this has been so refreshing tonight to talk about our students, to talk about opportunities through, to improve what we're doing and to provide our students with ways that they're going to be successful once they graduate and leave Knox County schools. And, you know, I know we talk about our vision and, and mission spotlight on our workshops, but it's just been so refreshing tonight just to focus on our students. And that conversation has just been wonderful. And I don't know, I know y'all are tired to hear me talk about street strategic plan, but hey, I have to one more time. It addresses achievement, it addresses culture and it addresses achievement gaps. Wow. So when we can see decreased, hopefully decreased suspension rates, when we can see higher attendance rates, when we can see algebra one proficiency improve, when, when, when we see grade point averages go up, I think that's just, that's everything all in one package. So I just want to, Jane, Donna, thank you so much for being here tonight. And thank you for bringing this to us. And John and Keith and your team, thank you so much for all the work y'all have done. This has just been great. And Chris, I can't leave you out at all. Thank you for your work with this. So it's just, I think it's exciting times in Knox County schools. Not that it's not been forever, but this is just really something that we can bring to, to our high schools. I think it's going to benefit our students and, and make, make Knox County more outstanding than what Knox County already is. So thank you.
Well, thank, thank you for inviting us into your community. And we look forward to continuing our journey down the roadmap.
Yes. And thank you Superintendent Thomas. I, I think you said it very well. It truly is, it's refreshing to, to hear this presentation and we're thankful for all the work that's gone into it. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that Phase Two and Three that Knox said Foundation has already committed to finance those. So thank you for that commitment and thank you for your partnership. And then we will consider a contract next week on our agenda that, for going forward. Is that correct? Am I, am I remembering that correctly, Superintendent Thomas?
I believe so. John, right? Is that, I know we've been working on our agenda.
I can't remember what's on our, we have something on our agenda regarding this next week.
No, we publish tomorrow.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think it's the face, face two, Terry knows, Terry knows, Phase Two and Three commitment letters are on our agenda for next week. So that would be our next step as a board to consider that next week. So, so thanks again to our presenters, Jane and Donna. Thank you so much for being here. And thank you to Dr. Ryswick and his team and to Chris and Knox Education Foundation. It, it really is a breath of fresh air to talk about something that would be so beneficial to our schools and our students. Thank you so much. And I believe that, do we have anyone for public forum, Ms. Bab? We do not have anyone for public forum. Do we have any comments for board forum? Anyone on this side? Ms. Owen?
I do quickly. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to let board members know that Salsa Rita's and STAR 102 are supporting our teacher supply depot with a supply drive. It will go from August 1st through August 15th. And there will be donation drop-off sites at Salsa Rita's beginning on August 1st.
Fantastic. Thank you for letting us know that. Anyone else? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.